Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 and at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, proclamation. Whereas for half a century, local governments in the Kansas City region have come together through the Mid-America Regional Council, MARC, to partner on regional initiatives and develop innovative solutions. And whereas the region consists of nine counties and 119 cities, which benefit from working across boundaries on a wide variety of issues and coordinating with diverse disciplines and sectors, including cities, counties, nonprofit organizations, social services, educational systems, and special districts. And whereas the region's leaders engage in informed decision-making through insightful data analysis and participate in a problem-solving forum to positively impact progress. And whereas each jurisdiction and individual has a role in creating a strong regional community and enabling everyone to come together to achieve positive change for the next 50 years. And whereas MARC is an organization that promotes regional cooperation, corporation through leadership, planning, and action, and is guided by the core values of integrity, innovation, collaboration, diversity, and inclusion, excellence in performance, and service leadership. And whereas the city of Leavenworth has participated or benefited from working across boundaries, allowing us to better serve residents because of our regional work regarding public safety, transportation, environment, early learning, aging, and shared local government services. And now therefore be it resolved, members of the City of Leavenworth City Commission celebrate the collaborative work that's been accomplished over the past 50 years and dedicate June 10th, 2022, the day of MARC's annual regional assembly, as MARC 50 Forward Day in recognition of the enormous progress the region will continue to make over the next five decades. And be it further resolved, I, Kamlem Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 10th, 2022, as MARC 50 Forward Day in Leavenworth and urge local leaders and community members to reflect on the great progress made in the past 50 years and join us in welcoming a future built upon strong regional collaboration, connections, relationships, and accomplishments.
Madam Mayor, we do have Ron from MARC here?
Oh, you made it. Just in time. Come on up.
Thank you.
Screw that up. Yeah, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Ron Acapulco, I'm the Director of Transportation and Environment, and I got caught in traffic on my way to meet him. I apologize for that. I do appreciate the proclamation. MARC certainly values our relationship with the City of Leavenworth and other communities in Leavenworth County as well, so very much appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is A C E C Engineering Excellence Award, Thornton Street Improvements.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm pleased and proud to talk about this item tonight. We have some guests here, as well as a short video from our Public Works Director. This project, Thornton Street, was identified a long time ago by the City Commission as one of the worst east-west traffic ways in the city of Leavenworth. Curb cuts, stormwater problems, as you'll see in the video, I won't step over the video. We had a partnership with Affenous Corporation, and we have Kristen Leather's Gratten here from Affenous to talk further. But the project was such a success that it was submitted for an award and was awarded the 2022 Engineering Excellence Award. And so let's do the short video and then bring up Kristen to talk about that. And unfortunately, I'm in a lot of this video.
The Lib version of Thornton Street was having. Although the section is a little less than a mile, it has a multitude of different issues. There's a school in the middle, an elementary school, a high school on one end. There are stormwater issues, there are ADA issues, we have an offset intersection, and then we had some traffic control issues. So the multitude of problems made it a prime candidate for a reconstruction project for the city. We were able to section this project to do an east section and a west section so we could keep some of the traffic flow moving north and south. And we just took it piece by piece, so we addressed the offset intersection in the middle by making it safer, improving the site distances. On the east side, we improved the intersection control with a new signal and some pedestrian timing. And on the west side, we really improved the stormwater functionality of the area, which helped the subgrade and helped the overall projects. I think infrastructure makes a statement about your priorities as a city. For this area, it was about pride for the residents, it was about accessibility, it was about movement throughout the city. And then I think getting into the weeds a little bit, the infrastructure of the stormwater and the ADA accessibility in the sidewalks makes a statement to visitors. It shows that you care about the look and feel of your city and about doing things the right way and helping residents, whether it's motorists or pedestrians or bicyclists, have safe access and movement around the city.
The Thornton Street project consisted of fixing Thornton Street from Fifth Street to Tenth Street. And the reason that was important, it's a direct access from actually Fourth Street to the high school, and it also is direct access for the city's municipal service center. So there's a lot of trash trucks, dump trucks that come from the service center and leave. And the street was in very poor condition. Everything was cracked up, the base was obviously a problem, everything was unlevelled. And we wanted to modernize it, bring it up to the new standards and put new curbs and gutters in, and then include sidewalks on both sides for pedestrian traffic and make it all ADA compliant. So it was a big task. By putting Thornton Street in as a new, complete street with all accessories to that street being new, it leaves it for no maintenance for us. We won't have to do anything for that street for quite some time unless a utility break happens and we have to do a patch. But other than that, the street should last us several years, 10, 15 years without any maintenance hardly at all. So that's a good plus for the city.
This project helps move the community forward as any project would that is in this scope. It is making a nice, wide thoroughfare that is easy to drive on, that is not full of potholes. It gives our businesses more accessibility to the different parts of the city. It is a nice, direct thoroughfare, so it takes the traffic off of other streets in our community.
The City Commission's larger plans are to improve all the roadways in Leavenworth. And by having a project like this, even though it took several years, it is worth it. And as we plan on other road projects in the community, we prioritize them, just like we did this one. Having improved roads helps everyone in the community.
So I'd like to bring up Kristen and her team from Affenous to talk a little bit about, just briefly about the project and the award. So come on up, please, Kristen.
Thank you for letting us present this award to the city and the staff tonight. Video kind of sums it up, it shows you the end product, but it truly was a labor of several years. We started with a conceptual study in 2016, working with staff to really kind of visualize what the corridor potential was, knowing that adding pedestrian safety and vehicular driver safety was a key factor. But we also took the opportunity to improve the stormwater through the area, add inlets to improve the, capture the water so it doesn't impair the intersections, as well as adding some BMP, best management practices, such as hydrodynamic separators that capture the rainwater and let it filter out the trash instead of it before it gets to the downstream systems, as well as adding a rain garden for water quality. They're around Seventh Street where the Hammerhead is and that offset is at the north-south intersection of Fifth and Maple. I think I also want to recognize the fact that the, there was, by having a longer lead time to do the design and do the proper planning for this project, we were able to engage stakeholders early on, such as Evergy and AT&amp;T, to facilitate their relocations that allowed construction to be expedited and eliminate some of those delays because we knew this was being a key, critical east-west corridor. It's important to maintain traffic, and that was one of the reasons that we phased it. So with that, I want to present the award. Oh, one other thing. A C E C stands for the American Council of Engineering Companies. And it's an agency or a professional organization across the nation that really supports engineering activities, supports us as a profession, and also helps us promote the fact that engineers should be selected by qualification-based selection instead of fee because we are professional service and it's about protecting the public welfare and well-being of your community by having licensed professional engineers do your design for these types of projects.
Former Public Works Director Mike McDonald is here. Mike worked on this project for a number of years. Certainly existing staff. Mike, who you saw in the video, or other city staff. And then, of course, we had the whole city teamwork on this. So I think it's been a successful project for the city, and we're happy to accept the award.
Thanks very much. Okay. Next up, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from May 10th, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from my fellow commissioners?
No.
No. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Okay, begin voting. Commissioner Hahn?
Aye.
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 Okay, passed. Okay, next up, new business, public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the Commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the Commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. So I believe we have a couple.
First up would be, Mr. Wyatt Galloway.
Okay, Mr. Galloway.
Excuse me, I have a list to bear with me, please.
Okay, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Wyatt T. Galloway. My address, home address, is 713 Oak Street, Leavenworth, Kansas, 66048.
Welcome, Mr. Galloway.
Thank you. There are three military and veterans organizations in Leavenworth. Post 56, VFW, Post 23, and Post 94. Okay? I'm here representing Post 94, okay? And what I'm about to advise or discuss is Maple Street, Third and Maple. It's only one building there, okay? And what we're asking is for the city to change Maple Street to Andrew Newton Street, which he is the founder of Post 94. I can't speak for Post 23 or VFW, you know, that'll be them if they want to do that, okay? The next thing is Special Olympics. I don't think we've had one in a long, long time. As a retired social worker, I worked with those type of kids over 20 years. So when I first came here to Leavenworth from 1974, we had those. So I'm asking the City Council to get with all these organizations, whoever they might be in this city, to restart Special Olympics. We've got so many kids here in this vicinity to work with, okay? The next thing, I was down Fort Riley last month visiting my grandson. And every restaurant or store that we went into, they always asked, are you in the military? Are you a veteran? Those owners, store owners and everybody, okay, so I showed them my ID, so they gave me a $10, a 10% discount. We don't have that in Leavenworth here. This is a military town, okay? I've been here since 1974 up to now. I'll probably be here until I go above up there. I don't know, I don't know who we can talk to about, but these restaurants and places here are making money on you all and the military active duty and the veterans. Doggedy Park. Last year, we had our family reunion here in Leavenworth from all over the states came here. And I chose Doggedy Park because it was named after Mr. Doggedy, okay? And when we went there, there is no picnic tables, there is no backstop for the softball field, there is no bleachers, okay? But the only picnic table was on top of the hill overlooking the river. So I'm asking the city to put those things down there close to the basketball court. The last thing is the city of Nicodinos. Has anyone here the city of Nicodinos?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was the first settlement in Kansas. Now, I don't know whether you call it a city or settlement or town, but Leavenworth is not the first city of Kansas. I've got relatives living in Nicodinos. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
I would just like to say one thing about Special Olympics. The Special Olympics has not been going on for the last couple of years, but Leavenworth County Special Olympics, I'm with United Way, and we give money to the Special Olympics. They're one of our partner agencies, and as my understanding, they will have Special Olympics this year. So they'll start them back up again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, did, we have somebody else for public comment?
Yes, Karen Oxer.
Karen?
If I'm saying correctly.
Hi.
Hi.
Mine is Karen Oxer, and I like to pass out, so if I pass out, just throw some water at me, I'll be all right. So this, the last time I did anything like this was in high school. That's thousands of years ago. Anyway, I'm here to talk about our quilt shop. Myself and my best friend Sammy here, we work at Leavenworth Assistance Center Quilt Shop. And Leavenworth Assistance Center is closing. They have no clue what they're going to do with us. They're not giving us any information what they're going to do with us. Alls I know is that we help a lot of people in Leavenworth area and beyond, all the way up to Colorado, Wisconsin, Lawrence, Topeka, Overland Park. We help a lot of people. Some of the people we, we give, like Mom dies, what are you going to do with all her craft stuff and her fabrics? You bring it to us. We go through it. We can resell it for somebody who's down on their luck, they don't have the money to go to Joann's across the river, or to even Walmart to buy their stuff that they need. They can come to us and get the same thing or close to it for a lot less money than what it would cost there. We have that options for them. We also provide the excess fabrics that we get from Mom's stash to several companies around the area, different organizations. There's some churches, they make sleeping bags for the homeless. We have put, like if we get blankets in, we call her up and we say, we got a bunch of blankets for you for your sleeping bags. She comes by, picks them up. We, so we help the homeless, we help everybody. And we, or will be, when Leavenworth Assistance Center closes, homeless ourselves. We don't want that. We want to continue here in Leavenworth and contribute to the, to our, sorry, to our town and everybody else that we help out in all those cities and states that I mentioned. We don't just quilt, we provide services. And like the other day, we had a young lady, a good friend of my friend Sammy, that came by and needed help for some sewing. So we have to sew. We would like to hope, maybe start up a sewing thing, so we can help some of these homeless people and groups to teach people how to take care of themselves and to mend their clothes so that they don't look raggedy and stuff like that. If we can do that, that helps out everybody. We want to stay in business. We want to open up maybe another nonprofit in our own names of a seven women who run the quilt shop. We've been running it since the pandemic. We shut down, then we opened it back up, and we have been making some good money. But we're all nonprofit. We are volunteers, we don't pay ourselves. We pay ourselves by giving joy to other people. And that's what we want to continue to do. But we need help. We need a home when we need clothes down to Leavenworth Assistance Center. What we make as our income is from quilting quilts, making homemade quilts for customers. We got a lot of customers that we, you got somebody passed away and you want to make a memory quilt, which is also probably a t-shirt quilt or part of their clothes. We can make that from scratch for you. You pay us, the money goes in to pay for our overhead. We don't make enough money to pay for rent, but we do make enough money to make the utility stuff. What we are looking for right now is a new home for us ladies to continue on. We would like to stay in the same building because a lot of these people come to our place. We've got people that their husbands play ball against the Royals. They come from other states. They come to us and they get stuff from us, like our Dollar Yard fabrics and stuff like that. They take it home and they help their own homeless back home. We do that kind of work.
Okay, thank you.
We have that kind of work, stuff that we can do.
No, thank you, Karen. What I would, and maybe someone listening can reach out and help, have you, just one note, reach out to maybe some of the other nonprofits? I know Leavenworth County Council on Aging, and just see if you can partnership, at least in the beginning, I mean, and just go from there, but...
See, that's the thing. We don't know where to go and stuff like that. We have contacted the Council of Aging to see if we can come with them, but unfortunately, they're moving into pushing.
Right.
And there's no room moving there.
Right. Okay.
It's filled up. That's what we've been told, it's filled up. So we don't have no room over there.
Okay. But no, I appreciate you coming here tonight, and hopefully, you know, a lot of people do watch us out there in TV land, or even some people here tonight, maybe you'll be able to reach out to you.
Are you on TV?
Yeah, you are.
Yes, you are.
So, no, Karen, I appreciate you coming here and making us aware of your situation. So hopefully, we can keep that, you know, somebody can partnership with you and keep it going. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Let me see.
Yep, sure. Okay, do we have any other public comment? That's it? Okay. Okay, next up then, Mayor's Appointments. I, Mayor Leonhard, move to appoint to the Convention and Tourism Committee Mary Ann Tenon to a term ending January 31st, 2025. Appoint to the Leavenworth Planning Commission Brian Stevens to a term ending May 1st, 2025. Appoint to the Leavenworth Preservation Commission Kenneth Bateman to a term ending April 15th, 2025. Appoint to the Parks and Communities Activities Advisory Board Jeffrey Porter to a term ending January 15th, 2025. Reappoint to Grow Leavenworth County Development Corporation Board Lisa Weekly, Wendy Scheit, Ted Davis, and Thomas Meyer to terms ending May 31st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, passed. Yeah, congratulations, and thank you for everyone out there that's willing to serve on these committees. Okay, next up, Seven Brew Coffee Site Plan Appeal, 4900 South Fourth Street.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, we'll start this with our Planning and Community Development Director Julie Hurley, and we'll also hear from our Public Works Director and Chief Kitchens.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is an appeal of the decision of the Development Review Committee to reject the submitted site plan for the Seven Brew Coffee proposed to be located at 4900 South Fourth Street. I know you're not typically used to seeing site plan appeals before you, so I'm just going to kind of walk through how this got to you tonight, and then I'll get into the details of the site plan. So, Section 2.05 of the Development Regulations places responsibility for review and approval or rejection of site plans on the Development Review Committee or the DRC. And that is a staff-level review committee composed of myself as the Director of Planning and Community Development, the Public Works Director, the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, City Clerk, and just other city staff that are relevant to the review of site plans. So, the Development Regulations lay out the process for that review coming to the DRC. And then, in the event that the DRC allows to withhold approval or rejects a site plan, that the Development Regulations provide the path for an applicant to appeal that decision to the Planning Commission and the City Commission. So this has gone to the Planning Commission already for their review, and then is here tonight for your review. So in that same section of the Development Regulations, Section 2.05, it also lays out a number of specific criteria that staff looks at when we are reviewing site plans. Two of those criteria, the first is that the proposed development shall not have any detrimental effect upon the general health, welfare, safety, and convenience of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, and shall not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. And another of those criteria is that ingress, egress, internal traffic circulation, off-street parking facilities, loading and service areas, and pedestrian walkways shall be so designed as to promote safety and convenience. So those two criteria are really about safety, right? So those two items sort of led to how we're getting here tonight, to the DRC rejecting the site plan as it was submitted. So, to get into the specifics of the site plan, the site is located again at 4900 South Fourth Street and is about half an acre in size. It's located in front of the existing Home Depot. That's that little vacant lot out to the front, there is a billboard on it currently. Access to the site is proposed to be directly from Fourth Street, which is a state and national highway and falls under KDOT jurisdiction for approval for any direct access. There is an existing curb cut and driveway on the site that's used for maintenance of the billboard. And this section of Fourth Street does have a posted speed limit currently of 45 miles per hour and handles a high volume of traffic with multiple existing commercial driveways in close proximity. So based upon the criteria that are laid out in the Development Regulations, staff identified five primary concerns that are related to this site plan, and that's a submitted traffic impact study, so I'll just run through those concerns right now. The first is that in Section 5.05 of the Development Regulations, we do require 50 feet of separation between non-residential access driveways. Staff has interpreted that to mean 50 feet of stand-up curb. And just to illustrate what that looks like, stand-up curb would be the straightaway portion of curb, so no part of a radius of any sort of entrance, just that straight part between two driveways. That has not been provided on the That has not been provided on the submitted site plan. Um, let's see, so according to the um, traffic impact study and the site plans that are submitted, the driveway spacing as submitted is eighty-two feet center to center of the driveways. Um, and that's much less than the fifty feet um, of stand-up curb that's required. The KDOT Access Management Policy actually requires a minimum driveway spacing of four hundred and fifty feet along a Class B highway, which this is, that handles twenty-seven thousand vehicles per day with a posted speed of forty-five miles per hour. Failure to meet that requirement by KDOT requires a variance to be issued by KDOT. As I said, the site does currently contain an existing twelve-foot wide driveway, which is in place to maintain that billboard that's on the site. That driveway is seventy-two feet south of the existing U-Haul driveway, measured center to center um, of those driveways. That driveway, when it was installed, also did not meet KDOT's, KDOT um, spacing requirements and was required to be issued a variance. KDOT did approve that variance due to the fact that this was a driveway to be used for maintenance of the billboard roughly twice a month by one truck. Um, the second concern that we've identified are really the additional points of conflict that are being created by this proposed access onto Fourth Street. With the existing driveway that services U-Haul and Starbucks directly to the north, the turn lane for access to Home Depot beginning directly to the south, there's an existing commercial driveway directly to the east, and four lanes of high-volume traffic on Fourth Street with a center turn lane. This proposed access creates an additional nineteen points of conflict in the area, um, which does propose significant traffic safety concerns. The next concern we identified is that the traffic impact study indicates that there would be a required right turn lane on Fourth Street for access to this site based on KDOT standards and that failure to meet that uh, with this, with the site plan would require an additional variance from KDOT to be issued. So that would be two variances from KDOT needed for this proposed access. The fourth concern we identified is based on the predicted peak customer volume of eighty-eight vehicles in the morning and a midday peak of sixty-six vehicles that was indicated in the traffic impact study. Um, that could potentially lead to stacking, backing up onto Fourth Street with the way the site plan is laid out. And that's gonna create yeah, even additional points of conflict with southbound traffic on Fourth and traffic exiting from the U-Haul uh, driveway to the north. And then the final point of concern we identified is the existing billboard base on the site is located um, approximately even with the stop bar that's shown on the site plan. Uh, that sort of solid black line would be the stop bar where cars should be stopping before they exit. And the billboard is directly to the north of that. Uh, the pole is a little bit hard to see up here on the screen, but it's right uh, in line with that. So that's gonna pose some site distance issues with cars stopping before they pull out onto Fourth Street. So based on those safety concerns, the Development Review Committee unanimously decided to uh, withhold approval of the site plan as it is submitted. And we did send a letter to the applicant on April seventh, um, informing them of that decision. So as I said, the Planning Commission has already considered the uh, this appeal to the DRC's decision. Um, they looked at that at their May ninth meeting and voted four to one to recommend approval of the site plan contingent upon the applicant receiving the necessary approval and variances from KDOT. So as Paul said, um, Brian Faust, our Public Works Director, um, is gonna speak. We've also got Chief Kitchens here and a representative from KDOT um, to speak on some of their concerns as well.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Julie did a great job uh, putting together kind of our concerns. Uh, one of the top priorities for city staff is safety when we look at any new project. When we have access controls, um, it's important to try to maintain those. Uh, when you reduce the required spacing, you increase the possibility of accidents. You create less safe intersections and you create problems with actually the through traffic on the roadway. So it was important to us when we looked at this that the site meet our minimum of fifty feet of stand-up curb. Uh, KDOT's requirement is significantly more, as Julie mentioned, four hundred and fifty feet from center line to center line. Uh, the city's access spacing requirements um, from our code are fifty feet. Uh, for this site, the fifty-foot separation would be from the U-Haul driveway to the north. Um, this drawing that staff provided and it actually duly showed on the, on the screen, pull that back up. Uh, we show fifty feet. Uh, both the north driveway, U-Haul and the posed site have roughly a twenty-five foot radius. Um, and so in the thirty-six foot wide commercial drive entrance, uh, roughly to meet our requirements, you need a hundred and thirty-six feet uh, center line to center line with that fifty-foot stand-up curb requirement. They currently, I believe, are in the eighty-foot range. And that fifty foot is a minimum. This is a state highway. It's important again to at least meet those minimums. Staff does feel very strongly that the commercial drive as proposed does create a safety concern and it will negatively impact traffic on Fourth Street. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any, go ahead.
One, um, actually Julie, you uh, you mentioned it earlier that uh, that KDOT policy requires uh, this, this separation based on the fact that these, the four-lane highway with the center lane also uh, going forty, posted at forty-five miles an hour would require uh, this separation. What if the uh, what if the tra, the uh, speed limit was slower? Would the policy change, the KDOT policy?
Um, I would need, uh, that'd be a KDOT question.
Yeah.
To, to me, it's very con, this whole thing is very confusing. So, so what you're saying is that this didn't meet the requirements for, for that, the safety requirements for that spot? And so, but it went through the Planning Commission already and the Planning Commission approved it? Or approved it with changes?
They voted to recommend approval to the City Commission contingent upon the applicant's being able to get the required variances from KDOT.
From KDOT?
From KDOT, yeah.
But that doesn't have anything to do with what this study has already done? And you still have concerns. We still have concerns, correct?
Right, right.
Safe, yeah.
Correct.
Main, main safety issue.
So.
This is, this is Ryan Barrett, the District Engineer from KDOT.
So I'm the, I'm the, I'm the area engineer out of Bonner Springs for KDOT. So I'm kind of the local representative for this area. Um, we have a lot of the same concern. Brian did an excellent, Brian and Julie both did an excellent job of um, voicing the same concerns that we have had um, all along. Um, in terms to address your comment about speed. Speed control out there, it's, you know, we, we typically set it at eighty, we, speed, the speed limits out on our highways are usually set in the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And part of the reason we do that is so that you can have um, flow without, you know, people are comfortable driving a certain speed for a particular type of roadway. Um, so you don't get, uh, cause if you're, if you fall outside of that eighty-fifth percentile, you're gonna end up with potential for additional safety issues and crashes in terms of um, people not driving fast enough or people driving too fast. And then, so then you get some, a lot more variance between speeds, which you don't want. Um, and so that's one of the reasons that from a safety standpoint, you know, lowering the speed limit, we gotta be really careful about, you know, we wanna make sure we do some type of a speed study or something like that. But it's, it's usually not something that we do um, without the data to be able to back it up. But, you know, since, uh, so my concerns are from KDOT's perspective. Um, you know, according to the site plan, um, you know, there's a, currently there's an existing twelve-foot driveway uh, south of, you know, center to center from the U-Haul entrance, entrance to the north. Um, a, a variance was provided, but it, it was based on the use of that site. Um, there's currently a billboard there. Um, you know, you're not creating a lot of conflict points because you're only have a couple vehicles in and out per month to be able to put a new face on the billboard. Um, it's, you know, able to um, provide the re, you know, be able to provide revenue. Um, also according to the site plan that was submitted, the proposed driveway access uh, is eighty-two feet center to center. You know, based on our access management policy, um, at, um, for the amount of traffic that's gonna be going, that would be going in and out of that site, um, with twenty-seven thousand vehicles a day out on K seven, US seventy-three, at a posted speed of forty-five miles an hour, we would need four hundred and fifty feet of spacing. As Brian's indicated, you start reducing that, you reduce that spacing with the number of conflict points that you're adding, the num, which would be nineteen in this case, crossing, diverging, merging. You know, you are creating potential for additional crashes. Particularly the severe, particularly severe angle type crashes with turning movements and all of that. There are, there were three crashes that occurred in this corridor within the area of influence um, on six fourteen of twenty nineteen, five thirty-one of twenty twenty, and five four of twenty twenty-one. One, one crash was an angle and two crashes were rear ends. That was just data that I pulled that was just available to me. There could be more, um, but just within the timeframe. That's, that's kind of just a quick snippet of the existing crashes that are out there today without the additional volumes. I guess we, we have never been presented any documentation of cross-access conversations with Home Depot and U-Haul. That's another thing that, you know, we feel the applicant should fully investigate and vet. Um, and then ultimately, we just feel, uh, the Metro Office believes that um, the way the existing site plan currently is, and that it's not, that the site is just not suitable for this type of development because of the woefully inadequate spacing to the north and south. Um, with the, because you're gonna end up with conflicts with the dedicated right turn lane into Home Depot. And then, um, and then the significant increase in turning volumes and the addition of nineteen conflict points. We just feel that it's, we're creating an unsafe situation for the traveling public and for people that wanna, that are gonna access the site.
Sure.
Are there any questions?
Just one more. Uh, Julie, you stated earlier that uh, the driveway, the driveway cut-in that exists is because of doing things with the billboard. You also said that that billboard was on the site. Is that billboard gonna be removed?
No. That billboard will be staying. Hence the pole presenting a site distance issue.
Um, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, we have one more city staff and then we do have the applicant here, so I wanna afford them plenty of time to speak as well.
One of your Chief Kitchens and then the applicant. It's great.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, just very briefly, I would add that um, when it's all said and done, um, the police department would be tasked with trying to solve some situation if you approve this and it moves forward and get built. And my concern about that is I don't know what the solution would be. If people are complaining about traffic congestion when this is constructed and it's operating, uh, the, the common request would be, hey, can you try and go out and solve this problem? I don't know that there's a solution that I can give you that would solve this problem. If there are cars stacked on Fourth Street, which is my principal concern here, waiting to get in while people are waiting to get out, that's not illegal. That's perfectly legal to do that. And it would be a question of, hey, can you go out in direct traffic? No, I can't. None of the officers can. Short of us having an officer sitting there with a police car, um, trying to uh, get cars in and out of the business, um, there is no solution. So I, I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. Uh, I have been concerned about the traffic plan since the inception, since I first saw it. Uh, I support everything that Julie and Brian said. I, I'm opposed to it. I don't think that it's safe. And I wanna be clear that uh, if it's approved and goes forward and is constructed, the police department would be tasked with trying to solve some traffic congestion problem out there. And there is not a present solution that I can give you that would solve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kitchens. Oh no, I just said thank you. Okay, and you said the applicant's here?
Yes, we do have a couple representatives of, uh, so if they wanna come forward and, and introduce uh, who they are and, and go forward.
Good afternoon. I'm John Kohlhoff. I'm with Seven Brew. First of all, I appreciate your service. I'm a former city planning commissioner as well as a current city commissioner in the city of Abilene, another one of Kansas' great cities. Uh, so I appreciate the hard work that you guys do. Um, I'm very happy to be back in the first city. We were here just a couple of weeks ago. Um, obviously to speak with the Planning Commission. We had a, a very lively conversation around this site plan. And we were uh, really honored to get their approval. I just wanted to tell you kind of where we started here and um, really our preferred site plan is just to redirect all of Fourth Street through, two lanes, all the way through our drive-through. So that way everybody can get coffee, everybody can get caffeine, everybody can get sugar, and everybody's gonna be happy. So they're not gonna mind the traffic at all because we're gonna get pumped up on all the good stuff. Okay, so this is a compromise. So, uh, just to tell you a little bit about Seven Brew, um, we're a drive-through only beverage company. Uh, we serve hot iced frozen beverages, a lot of coffees, smoothies, shakes, uh, energy beverages, and Italian sodas. Um, we have opened up our first location, uh, the first location in the state of Kansas in Topeka. Um, and uh, we're just terribly excited to bring this to Leavenworth. Um, in our Topeka location, we've hired sixty people. We would anticipate hiring about fifty people uh, for a location in Leavenworth. Um, and we look forward to hiring really the best and brightest people and help training them, helping to train them and give them some tools for their future success. Those opportunities for advancement uh, within our, within our franchise and also paying them really well along the way. Um, I do just wanna a, address a couple of things here um, that have been mentioned. So first of all, with U-Haul, uh, we have reached out to U-Haul and they have been unwilling to accommodate an access from their site. We're not sure, but we believe there may be some um, conflict of interest with the Starbucks. I believe they sold them that pad. So we're not sure on the details, um, but as of yet, they have been unwilling to accommodate any access request. Um, there's also some just physical um, site issues. We've reached out to Home Depot as well um, and have not gotten any response from anyone at Home Depot, both individually and through our, our civil engineer uh, who actually helped develop that site. The, the stacking question. So if, as you can see, this is a double drive-through and it looks like the cars are just sitting there. But when those cars enter the driveline, even that very last car, um, and we've got videos to prove this. We actually, in Topeka, they didn't believe our service times. We told them it'd be about five minutes. So we threw a drone up in the air and timed them down in um, northwest Arkansas, which is the home area. And it's really, it's, the service time is about three minutes. So there is, there has been um, literally one time that a car is backed up onto Wanamaker. I don't know if you know about Wanamaker. It's not a state highway certainly, uh, but it has very similar, similar characteristics uh, to this site um, for a number of reasons. Number one, both the, what I think they're calling points of conflict, I call them streets, um, and driveways. But there are, there are very, very many other users of that street on a highway or a, a street that is very similar, where it has two lanes in either direction as well as a center turn lane. And um, traffic flows magically. I mean, there's, there's people turning in left, there's people turning in right. And there's really very few points of conflict. No, so I, I think, you know, if you look at this in theory, you could probably see a whole bunch of points of conflicts, you know, maybe if twenty people come from every driveway and every street all at the same time, you would have those points of conflict or, or potentials for accidents. But in the real world, in a very, very similar real life situation, there's just not that um, experience. I think the gentleman said that there have been three accidents on a road that has twenty-seven thousand cars per day. That's, in three years, that's thirty million cars. That's, I mean, you're, you're looking at a rate that's approaching the safety of air travel. So I think, you know, if you have three accidents with thirty million cars, you've got a very, very safe intersection. And that's very similar to what we have in Topeka. I think you're gonna have a very similar experience as far as the traffic flow and safety of that setup. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We've kind of gone, the, your Planning Commission did a tremendous job. I hope you're able to watch that video. Um, and just kind of going through all those specifics and details of that meeting. Um, but I'm happy to answer any. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I've got with me Addison Bliss from Veritas Architecture and Design. And he's going to address a lot of those more technical aspects of some of the things that were brought up here.
Okay, yeah, I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, so you didn't, for the Topeka site, which is a totally different site, I mean, we have to be concerned with Leavenworth, but you didn't have to deal with KDOT.
No, but we did have to deal with the city of Topeka. There's an argument to me that that was worse.
Okay. And also, reviewing some of the planning commission, I noticed that one of the commissioners asked if this was not possible, this location, you know, due to, which I, you know, in my opinion, a lot of safety issues. If there was a possibility to go someplace else. And someone had stated that there's a possibility, possibility for a different location within the city of Leavenworth.
Yeah, there's a real possibility for that. That pretty picture you've got there, I think, is well into the mid-five figures that we've got. And so between that and the contract with the seller and some of those contractual obligations that we have. You know, I don't think that we would be terribly excited to break out the checkbook to do that again. I think we have a perfectly viable site here. I don't think that the highest and best use of that is as a billboard. You have a lot of space there. And if a billboard's the highest and best use of that, you know, maybe we need to get more billboards out there.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. Kohlhoff, I, first of all, I think it's awesome anytime a new business is wanting to come to town. You know, definitely can't ever get enough coffee, for sure. But can, can you tell me more? So I will tell you, I don't know how many times I've gone to be a, a regular shopper at Home Depot, right there. And that exit, when I'm, when I'm leaving every single time, I mean, it's like, you know, I have to figure out some, you know, good driving jujitsu sometimes to make it out of there to, so I don't injure my family. And so I don't see any problem with cars coming into your place of business at all. I mean, it looks like it could flow really well coming from the north to the south. I'm not sold on the fact that there won't be issues when people are trying to leave, especially at certain times of the day. Some of those times being in the morning when a lot of folks are actually coming into town to go to post. So maybe could you speak to that a little bit?
I really think that's kind of on the more technical side, but I had Mr. Bliss address, if, if you don't mind.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can finish answering that question. I have a few more things to kind of speak about, too. I think for exiting, we, we did what's called a traffic impact study to convince, you know, it was a request by KDOT. And I think, I don't know if the city requires it or not, but it's an extensive study on exactly what happens to the site. And if there's any way you can quantify the safety of the site, it's using a traffic impact study. And the exiting situation is probably best summed up by a quote from that that says, entering vehicles will be circulated and retained on the site during AM peak hour by the installation of the two drive-through lanes. And so if that's true, they also have to exit. And so the strategy, you know, with that and understanding how they interpreted that or established that is that eighty-eight cars, I believe, is the, was the number for coming in the AM peak hour. In order for those to be retained on the site, then that means that they anticipated those would also be able to exit. I, I can't speak that much about how they exactly determine that, but that's the purpose is of kind of buying that service from them. Or not, hopefully helpful.
I mean, I appreciate that. I'm not sold on it, but, but, you know, appreciate this stats, though.
We did, we, we are including the two exit lanes for the purpose of them being able to choose a right turn and be able to get around and make that decision rather than being forced through the one lane and having the backup happen where the one stubborn person wants to turn left. Maybe that's helpful, too. Sorry.
My greatest concern would be somebody trying to exit and turn left, turn northward out of that driveway, because they've got to get across, they've got to determine, okay, traffic coming south, traffic coming north. And they've got to get across three lanes of traffic before they can get into the, the, the westernmost lane of northbound traffic.
So this is not technical, but just my experience. We have a very similar scenario. We're actually right in front of the Home Depot in, in Topeka. And so there's a stoplight right there. And generally, what you see is, I mean, kind of what you would expect. You called it parking, or driving jujitsu, which I'm going to use in the future. But essentially, what happens is those cars just stop short. If they're backed up at that light, they stop short of the drivelines and the people can exit seamlessly. I don't know, I guess I don't know that I would expect anything different in Leavenworth. We've quickly become a favorite of first responders, Mr. Kitchen's staff. And, you know, we, we just don't, we just don't see a lot of the issues that, that seem to be a concern for staff.
Have you tried to exit out of there before?
Well, so right now, it's just dirt, but I've certainly been on the site and looked at the site from what would be the U-Haul driveways, the Home Depot driveways. But I didn't feel like off-roading on that site. But I, again, I, I can tell you, I would, I would love to take all of you through the drive-through on the other place at AM peak hours or, you know, on a Saturday afternoon when everybody and their, their kids are out playing soccer and doing home improvement projects. It's, it's just really not a concern. You know, I think there's, you talk about the, the speed limit and the safety with that, but if everybody's stopped in traffic, you're not worried about getting hit at forty-five miles an hour because their cars are stopped.
It's about twelve hundred feet. I just measured it to the stoplight down at Eisenhower. That's the closest stoplight here.
Okay, just for reference. Yeah, and see, my concern is, you know, it's a, you know, a state highway, you know, it's Fourth Street. So there is, and I'm out that way all the time, all the time. And especially with the, that whole intersection we're getting ready to redo, well, basically more Lansing, we have one in the corners of Fourth and Eisenhower, but, I mean, there's a lot of traffic right now. And, and it might be a different type of traffic because it is people coming in to jobs from out of town and going out and being in a hurry, you know, because they're running late or, I don't know. I, my first concern, I love businesses. I love new businesses. I love coffee coming into town. But for that little patch of land, I don't know, I just don't think, just in my opinion, that it's not, you know, well, it's unsafe. And they've even said, some of the other, the planner and the chief of police and the engineer, that, you know, it's all about safety of the individuals, you know, before a cup of coffee. I mean, it really is. I mean, I'd hate to, one accident is too many accidents. But like I said, I was born and raised here, but I'm out, I don't know if you guys are out in that area a lot. And it's, it's crazy now.
Development Review Committee saw this first before the planning commission, correct, or is that the other way around? Development Review Committee.
Yeah, staff, yeah.
Staff. Development Review Committee is made up of community development, building inspector, city clerk, city manager, city assistant city manager, city planner, fire chief, parks, recreation, police chief, and public works. That's, yeah, that's a pretty extensive group. They, they voted to not approve it, and then it went to the planning commission, and then they voted to approve it.
Except, yeah, one of them didn't.
Well, so what? They still approved it.
Yeah, they did.
Contingent upon the variances from the, from KDOT.
They voted to recommend approval, so it's similar to a special use permit or rezoning, or the planning commission. Here's it makes a recommendation to the city commission.
With, with those stipulations as to obtaining KDOT approval.
KDOT approval, but it looks to me that, and after hearing gentlemen from KDOT, that they would not approve it anyway.
So KDOT, and I don't want to speak for Ryan.
This particular.
KDOT has, the, the stance of KDOT usually is, it does not meet, however, if the local jurisdiction approves it, KDOT will then approve it. Now, at that point, they, they will still say, it seems like it would go the other way, that KDOT would review it, but that's not how they operate. That if the local jurisdiction, local governing body does approve, then KDOT would grant the variances per the discretion of the local government.
Can I, can I clarify that? It's actually not quite right. They won't, KDOT will not review it at all until we get approval from you.
Oh, I see.
Right. I, I don't believe that was in conflict with what I was saying. Once we get approval, they'll go to KDOT, and then at that point, they would, they would, they would approve the variances.
Maybe.
Maybe. Yes, that is the direction that, that we, we believe that they would go. But it's still up to KDOT.
I just, I just have a concern that our Development Review Committee rejected this based on some very valid issues. Yeah, issues even with them. That's my concern.
Can I speak to those?
Commissioner Wilson had to.
Yeah, I was about to say, just as one commissioner, with the concerns presented by the city as well as KDOT, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this.
I have a question for Mr. Kohlhoff, Kohlhoff. You told us, and I read it, that you, you had tried to talk to the folks at Home Depot about using their driveway. And I mean, man, it looks like prime way to do it, according, you know, just looking at this, this photo from above. They just never responded, and you said, okay, through them.
Yeah, so we're using Cobb Valley Engineering for the site, and they actually helped develop the site for Home Depot. And I reached, I mean, I, I called a number for somebody in real estate at Home Depot. It's not like they have a, you know, a Rolodex, like, hey, if you want to talk to somebody about the Leavenworth location, call this guy. I reached out to somebody who looked like he should have been in charge of this area. And our engineer, Leon Osborne, reached out to his contacts with Home Depot and did not get those returned as well. I would like, if you would not mind, there was a couple of points that were made, kind of on the technical side, where Mr. Bliss has kind of prepared some rebuttal, so.
Okay, sure, sure. No, please, please do. Please.
Okay. I know you guys care a lot about the city, so I'm, I'm glad you guys are interested, involved in this. But I want to go through this list, and it is very technical, and if you'll bear with me, I'd appreciate it. So the, the first requirement, the stand-up requirement, I want to make it very clear that that's not defined in the code. That's a code interpretation. So that is something that's been placed onto this project, not, not in a sense that they were actually complying with the development code. It is reasonable to assume that the fifty feet referred to in the code would be center to center, and the site plan does accommodate that. So it is in compliance with the cited section five oh, five point oh five as written. In addition to that, that in, that section we're referring to, that it's a point of disapproval says that the spacing requirement begin, begins with, unless no other practical alternative is available. We believe we've substantially proven that no other practical alternative is available through the seven months we spent working with KDOT in the city of Leavenworth to kind of resolve this. In addition, you can see, I think he described it was a hundred and thirty-six feet we would need. I, I think a city block here is two hundred and thirty-something. So a developer would have to purchase nearly an entire city block to meet that requirement. And if we're meeting KDOT, we would have to purchase an entire city block in order to meet that requirement. Just to kind of put that in perspective for you to understand what that would take. The TIS document does state that this is designed to meet the city's requirement of fifty feet of stand-up curb between the driveways. That was by the professionals who wrote that. The TIS document doesn't describe these additional points of conflict. We've asked for some determinations of what the nineteen points of conflict are. We haven't gotten any real determination on that. I mean, we can respond to that to some degree. I can tell you as much to speak about points of conflict here. And that that exit lane, you can see, it's pushed up really close to the entrance lane. You can imagine that that could very easily be pulled all the way to the south side of the site, right? The point through the TIS process was that we pulled that up to the north as far as we could. That way, it would most align with that use of the, the drive across the street. Because the most important thing, at least as we understand from the traffic study, is that the crossing traffic, when two cars are trying to make left turns at the same time, is the most dangerous situation. And so pulling that the furthest to the north we could was the best solution we could within the land that's provided there. We understand from KDOT that the variances would be approved because, and I quote, "The lack of an alternative public road makes direct access to the highway necessary." I believe that was David Stites who said that in one of our previous conversations. The existing billboard post, I, I want to make it clear before I talk about the last one that the only, the only conflict point here that is a point of disapproval is a fifty-foot measure. The other four points are not based in any kind of code or anything. They're just points of disapproval. I understand that safety may be the backing for that, but make it clear that those aren't written in the development code somewhere for us to adhere to or to not adhere to. So including this billboard sign portion, it's roughly thirty-five feet away from the closest vehicle exit on the property. And it sits twenty feet back from the designated curb location. So currently, if you kind of look at that site plan, you imagine how the U-Haul people, it's not in their way to see out. It's because they can pull all the way up to the street. And so the city requires us to do sidewalk improvements. You can see there where we pull the sidewalk back. The only reason that the billboard is becoming, and, what is the correct word for that? It's in your site triangle, I suppose, where you're trying to exit. Is that the bumps for the, where you stop your car have been pulled back to allow the sidewalk to happen. So as you can imagine, when the U-Haul makes their upgrades sometime in the future to include the sidewalk, that same imposition will happen on the site to the north as well. A couple other points here. So the precedent in the area shows pretty general compliance with the state of the existing development along Fourth Street. Fourth Street isn't a perfect street. We do, lots of issues across. I mean, you can look directly across there and see that the fifty-foot situation we're describing isn't compliant directly across the street. There's two drivelines there directly across that are basically zero feet apart according to that rule. And so that, you know, that nonconformance happens up and along this area. Now, I want to point out that there's at least twenty-seven instances of these noncompliant drive aisles along Fourth Street. I didn't get all the way up to downtown, but downtown is obviously entirely noncompliant as it comes through.
Downtown is a hundred years old. Well, I was like, yeah, eighteen fifty-four, yeah, so we still.
Right. To that point, there's one instance that can be installed in a twenty-twenty aerial view. And I drove past it a second ago at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Fourth Street that was recently installed and noncompliant with this. One of these instances of the noncompliant fifty-foot rule is, I said, is happening across the street. I did see that you guys are reducing the speed limit from forty-five to forty along that section, which hopefully will have some.
Yeah, it's, no, we haven't made that decision yet.
Not yet? Okay. Oh, geez. Well, it's, it sounds like that would be in the best interest of the area.
I don't know. We haven't made that decision yet.
Okay. Well, a, a change to the forty mile an hour thing would hopefully help. It, it seems like that, you know, that portion is probably this, the speed at which it's traveling right now could be a little too, too fast. So I, I think a, a position to change that by five miles an hour may make a difference on this. And I, I think the, you know, the vision for making a thriving commercial corridor along the street is development of these commercial areas. And being that a lot of these properties are landlocked, you can see along there where, you know, it's just, there's been nonconforming changes up and down Fourth Street the entire way. It's really hard to see how a developer could come along here and purchase these in, in three-hundred-foot blocks and make these changes. Which just kind of lends us to see, like, when we're looking up and down the street to find properties that fit the bill for this, there just aren't. There aren't properties that fit the bill for this. So when you, when you go to say like, well, would this apply to a different situation? And we start considering whether or not, you know, these restrictions we've been put on this, these issues, so to speak. The distance, the points of conflict, these kind of things. If you apply those to these different sites up along Fourth Street, it's reasonable to conclude that this kind of operation would just not be allowed to a certain degree on any of the properties that we can kind of really purchase. Maybe there's one that'll come up sometime in the future, but it's hard to see because a vast number of properties here are generally in the same size and scale and along the same area, and that's where we want to develop it, is along Fourth Street.
You know, I would actually be, I, I would.
You know, I would actually be, I I would encourage you guys, and I know it's frustrating because there's a lot of work that goes into a plan like this, a lot of details, I mean, can't imagine. I would have really hoped that maybe you would have been able to establish some contact with Home Depot as an option. I was wondering that, you explained with U-Haul that, you know, it wasn't an option that they wanted to look at. You know, whether or not that's a great piece of property or not, I mean, it it is what it is right now. You know, I definitely lean towards, I would I would try that avenue with Home Depot. Having, again, just a lot of experience on that road all the time, I do agree with a lot of our comments from, you know, the staff here, that it could be a potential big issue.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I.
Yes.
I wanted to just add a little bit of context as well, because there's been some discussion about standards and such. Some of the references have been made to this section, Article 5, regarding access. And indeed, your staff has interpreted those in a certain way and has applied those. There is indeed some language in there about unless no other practical alternative is available, that is that is there as to it. That does not necessarily mean, though, that anything goes on it, on it. Because you're considering a site plan, not under this Article 5, but under Article 2, which sets forth a certain several criteria, which Julie spoke about before. And some of those include that the proposed development shall not have any detrimental effect upon the general health, welfare, or safety, that ingress, egress, internal traffic, et cetera, et cetera, shall promote safety and convenience. So I think it's a false equivalency to say, because part of the code says, unless no other practical alternative exists, then maybe a standard can be varied, that that means automatically it must be deemed safe under the standards for a site plan review approval, which is what's before you this evening. And I did just want to add the context that you do have options this evening, your options, you know, which should be made by a proper motion. And second, and such would be to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve it, subject to the KDOT stipulations. You could accept it without those stipulations, if that's an option that you wanted to. Or your option could be to have a motion to disapprove of the site plan in accordance with the recommendation of the Development Review Committee.
If I can, I wanted to just touch base again on that, the Home Depot, and really the U-Haul site. I'm guessing you've all seen that site, but I would be surprised if any of you have walked it. And there is about an eight-foot differential between both U-Haul and Home Depot and that site. And so there's going to be significant access issues, even if we could contact somebody at Home Depot and get them to return a phone call. We would still have some access issues with that and with U-Haul as well. Our, like I said, our engineer did develop that Home Depot site, and so he did look at those as possibilities. And I believe we even have a site plan drawing that shows access from U-Haul, but they are, at least at this point, unable to give us that access. And I think, did you have a couple more things?
One more, one more thing. I have a piece of information here. Can I approach?
Sure.
Something for you guys to read and consider, and maybe maybe it may some matter, it takes some time. I know that.
Thank you.
This is quite a document, so I don't want you to feel like we have to read it right now. But I'll I'll read the highlighted portion, so you guys can kind of understand what we're trying to get at.
Thank you, sir.
This is pretty good for the city clerks, I can be in the record.
Oh, I see.
I need you to read it.
Yep.
My last copy.
Okay. Don't forget.
I won't forget.
Okay, so on on page four of this document, this was given to me, so I might read it to you guys and share. "It must be conceded the state, subject to constitutional limitations, has absolute control over the streets and highways within its boundaries. The state may exercise this control either by the use of its police power or the power of eminent domain. At the same time, it is recognized in the law of this state that the right of access to and from an existing public street or highway is one of the incidents of ownership of the land abutting thereon. It is a property right which may not be taken from the owner by the public without his consent, except upon payment of full compensation and due process of law." That's quoting Smith versus State Highway Commission.
Madam Mayor, this property has access to the site, has access to the site for purposes of constructing and maintaining a billboard. There's no, no action by the city tonight is removing that access. There is access to the site for those purposes which are appropriate to the site. Not all sites are appropriate for all purposes. It is not an inverse combination to say that a property cannot be used for all purposes, which an owner might be. It's not inverse combination to say that a casino is not appropriate for this site. The site has legal access to 4th Street for the purposes for which the property is currently being used. And this consideration is not removing that legal access.
Thank you.
The the purpose of the construction of this is allowed by the zoning code, correct?
Subject to the site plan review.
Any other? Yeah, you have any comments, Commissioner Hengler?
Yeah, just, you know, if we don't approve this, I would, you know, on this night, I would encourage you not to quit calling Home Depot. It sounds like, you know, from what I read and what you've said, it sounds like you contacted them, they didn't answer, so you said, eh, can't get through to them. You know, there's letters, emails, you know, many ways of contacting an organization. And I wouldn't go through your, through the engineer that designed the Home Depot. I would go through, you know, the home office of Home Depot. Start trying to go through them. You still have the property or access to the, you don't, you know, you don't own the property, right? But you would still have the, the what's called, the ability to lease that property if you can just come up with a different way of getting in there, if you if you are not approved tonight.
And I have to say, I I agree with Commissioner Hengler. I mean, I've seen some sites smaller than this get worked out somehow. The access doesn't come from the main road, but, you know, from from back way and around. And again, definitely not opposed to your business or anything like that. But that is the only way I see forward right now, is to make it happen with Home Depot.
Yeah.
Or convince U-Haul to, hey, change your mind.
But yeah, I'm right there with him. Yeah, Home Depot, I know it's a large corporation or whatever, and tend to have a hard time getting back to people, because I've known some experiences with that. So, but to get that cross-use agreement, that would be great. So, yeah, I'm right there with Commissioner Hengler and Commissioner Martin. Yeah, and, you know, my big thing is, right now, is where it stands, this, the safety.
Part of this, too, Madam Mayor, to to your point is, you know, we're talking about, as we look into the future of Leavenworth and how how we're, you know, continuing to to try to grow, and what future traffic's going to look like, too, you know. Mr. Kramer's done a really good job in his team of making sure that we're lining everything up the right way. For the years to come, I don't see this being a good piece of that to, from a, you know, thoroughfare standpoint, keeping the traffic running good.
Yeah, just to speak to the the Home Depot, I I believe that is dead on arrival. We're in a, we're a convenience business. There's a, I don't believe that I would get that site plan approved through our franchisor that would require us to go into Home Depot, into the back, all the way over to the corner. You're talking about a quarter-mile drive from what what should be our entrance to get into the site to access. So I believe, I mean, like I said, I believe that would be dead on arrival. I don't think that there's any hope of developing it with that plan. There's a reason why our neighbors to the north there are, you know, it's 100 feet or less.
Sure.
And and easy access, visible from, visible from the street. So I, well, I understand that, and I I certainly appreciate the sentiment. It'd be nice if U-Haul would just say, great, we'd love to have the traffic. That's that's not the situation we find ourselves in.
We would love to have your business, just not at this location, sir.
Yeah. I would like to say something here about development in the past. I mean, you know, to to talk to us about things that we've done in the past as far as putting driveways together, putting driveways in, and at one time, 4th Street was nothing but fields. So, I mean, you know, we tried to get business in there, but that's in the past, and that's with different people, with different commissioners. I mean, we had not the the caliber of expertise working for us as we do now. And I would have to follow the recommendation of the Development Review Committee on this issue. I I was, I've been out of town, and I apologize, I read all this stuff through, but I was under, I guess I was under the impression that there may have been some changes before it came to us. And I was surprised that the planning commission passed it. So that's that's, my recommendation would be the the same as the Development Review Committee recommended.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to disapprove the site plan for Seven Brew Coffee located at 4900 South 4th Street.
Second.
Begin voting, Commissioner Hengler?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Okay, next up, bids, contracts, and agreements, River City Community Players Agreement.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I'm going to pinch-hit on this one, as our Parks and Recreation Director is out of town. Could I have Ron Mazia come up, please? Mr. Mazia is here from River City Community Players. Briefly, I think our previous city clerk and our Parks and Recreation Director discovered that the agreement between RCCP and the city, dating back to 1977, was out of date. We needed to do a few things, like having timelines, financial records, and then also an agreement review period, so that it can be reviewed biannually. And then working with Mr. Mazia, and I'll let him talk about these specific points. There's always an opportunity to clarify a few things. We did some stuff like square up the season ticket levels, which have already been passed by the commission, update those in the agreement, do some point-of-contact information, so we have that single point of contact between the organizations. And then maybe the the biggest change in here is the play licensing and material process streamlined to make the RCCP the direct contact with the theater companies, sort of eliminate the city from that that period. And so the agreements before you, I believe both parties have looked at it, are in full agreement. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Mazia, and he could speak more, as he and Mr. Grant were involved in that process. Sir?
Evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The last time this agreement was signed was 1997. Linda Finch was the president of the RCCP.
Yeah.
I think it's prior to Julie Anderson, prior to Steve Grant, I can't remember the gentleman's name, Ed. Commissioner Hengler might remember him. Yeah, if I ask you. Katzenberger, Bill Katzenberger.
Oh, Bill, yeah.
Before we started streamlining, and I'm glad to say that Wendy is back with us for at least, she says, three more years, we would turn over the request for licensing to the city clerk, the city administrator for the Parks and Recs. And she would spend the better part of three to four weeks dedicated to getting those agreements through to the various production houses and what have you. They've streamlined that and turned it back to us. I can see why they want to, because it is a lot of work to get that put together. And in the first year of them taking it from Wendy Hall and Steve Grant to myself and our representatives, who's who's talking to whom? And the bottom line is, Steve Grant still signs the paperwork approving the contract. It still goes to the contracting office. They're the ones that pay the bill. It still goes that way. We can do all the legwork. This is what we want to use, there's the agreement times, these are the performance dates and all that, and then send it back to Mr. Grant as a complete package. He signs off of it, goes to contracting, they cut the check, and away we go. It's streamlined that. It's it's had some frustrations, to to say the least, getting all the pieces and parts. Whereas Wendy Hall used to do it, I now do that. She's still on the contract, I mean, on the, where she can communicate with the organization. But it's the first time, the first time you you walk, you take a step, you know, am I, am I going to fall flat on my face? Yeah, I've been down there a couple of times this past week, trying to get the, an agreement through. One group sends it out on DocuSign. The only person that can see it is the person that has to sign it. They were sending it to me. I can't sign it. I'd send it back, I'd send it to Steve. He can't open it because he's not on the DocuSign. So we've gone through a couple of steps that way, but it's it's improved, improved a lot more efficient. And I see as we go through this and we build that smart book to make this work, it's going to go a lot smoother. It will take a lot of load off of his staff, put a little bit more on ours. We get those extra extra volunteer paychecks for being a volunteer. But I think it's it's a good process, it's a good, we've put some things in place. Some of the things we we were doing all along, and people didn't know it. We we have points of contact, who who to contact in the case of an emergency, who can authorize this, who can authorize that, accounting of funding and stuff like that. So that's, it's just, a lot of it is just putting it in, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is that haven't been done for 27 years, 25 years?
And, Madam Mayor, Commissioner, there are no fiscal impacts of this. This is just updating the agreement, putting stuff into place. But we talk about RCCP, and Mr. Mazia will be here when we do our budget discussions and how that functions, but there are no fiscal impacts to this, to this contract.
Mr. Kramer, can you tell me, what's the impact right now, just to our budget period? Like, what what are some of the financial guidelines in place already?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't have right in front of me.
Okay, I'll get you.
Question. Paragraph four, responsibilities of Leavenworth Parks and Recreation Department. At the end of that paragraph, paragraph four, it says, returning rental materials in properly prepared packages. Are they still going to be responsible for returning all the the libretto's and the the scripts?
For the shipping, because they're the, they hold the contract. They would, we would, we do now, we take all the libretto's that have to be returned.
Yeah.
Because what they've been doing lately is, you pay for the script, here's your PDF file, now you print it off. And we aren't getting those, and we don't have to return it. Some of them, they they do, yes, we we still have to package it up and ship it back out to the company. We take it down, and they 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 put the FedEx package or whatever they have, and they're getting it back up to to MTS, MTI shows for one.
Yeah, or Tamswit Mark, whoever. Yeah, no, the only reason I ask that is because it's, you know, part of the background of the the policy was the idea that you guys were going to be the the point of contact with Tamswit Mark or MTI.
We are, as far as all the coordination, when it comes to something that is contractual, signing a signing a document, it's still Parks and Recs, because we're all underneath them.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yep. Commissioner Mark?
Just, I guess, with financial responsibility that could be on the city, something does go awry with infrastructure or something like that, is there anything? Do we have any? I'm trying to, I'm trying to think in terms of what might be, we be out if there's any surprise expenses, and I just don't know. Is there anything?
Yeah, so I'll talk to, I'll talk, I'll split this into two things. The the operation, the RCCP, that's the internal operations of, that's the plays, that's the events and stuff like this. A separate discussion, but but part of the discussion, because it's in the building it's in, is the city is responsible for that building. So if you're getting at what happens if the air conditioning goes out, if a pipe breaks and stuff like that, that is the responsibility of the city.
Yep.
That it's it's somewhat similar to the our relationship that we have the library, where we own that building.
Gotcha.
And so all capital stuff, we did do a big upgrade to the HVAC system, and maybe in the last.
Two years ago?
No, no, it's been more like five, yeah.
Right after I.
But that is our building, so anything catastrophic that happens, there is the responsibility of the city.
Maybe longer, when Julie Julie Anderson was here when we first started that process.
Yeah, it was right after I came on the commission.
Sir, I can answer some of your questions. The the cost of a of a musical, I just did it for Oliver. Oliver cost $3,455 for us to rent the royalties to that show. That brings all the material to us. We have season tickets that we sell this past year because of COVID and and because we delayed delayed getting the ticket out. We have turned in about $9,000 in season ticket sales for this year. Using that same number, the two musicals, which are the big shows, are the three, they're about $3,000 each. The Christmas show, which is a a bridge version of Dickens. The Christmas show, which is a bridge version of Dickens' A Christmas Carol, costs zero except for the director. My wife adapted Dickens' work. It's not licensed, it's not, not charged, she doesn't charge anything for it. I've seen it on, on one of the play sites, $80 per performance, which would be $240 that we would have to pay in royalties for something that's in public domain, because someone wrote it and they produced it. That will bring in somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000, because we put about 25 children on, on stage. Mom, dad, grandmother, grandfather, aunts, uncles, and everybody else come down there. They pay $5 ahead to come in to see that show. That is the biggest show, biggest performing show as far as revenue that comes into the, to us, which goes to the Parks and Recs, back to the city. Our non-musical shows average about $150 per, per, per performance. Put about $500 into a director's stipend, so there's about $1,000 per show. We will usually clo, we will usually cover that with the people that walk, the patrons that walk up and pay that day. So the two, the two big shows, the two musicals, usually gets paid by, covered by the patron ticket sales that we do. The non-musical shows usually get picked up with enough money coming in from people walking up and paying 15, 12, $10, whatever they happen to be, senior, military, or not, or just a regular person. Will cover the cost of our shows. So our shows, our production and everything, usually gets covered by everything there. Where the cost comes in, as you said, the building. Utilities, all that, heating, air conditioning. Fortunately, we haven't had one go out bad lately.
No, I appreciate that clarification.
That's, that's kind of where it is. We can't pay for the building. One time, they, they said, "We want to separate ourselves from the city." And a lawyer looked at them and go, "What are you smoking? Who wants to do that? The city pays your utilities, the city pays your costs, all you can do is turn all the money over to the city."
So, quick, quick note, in 2021, for the budget, if Mr. Mazia hits his numbers, the city will subsidize the operation down there by about $7,000. So that would be utilities, operating the building, any shortages that they may have. So, about $7,000 for the year.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I just need a motion.
Recommend approval of the memorandum of agreement with the River City Community Players as it's written.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, next up, agreement, agreement with Home Depot for right-of-way easement acquisition.
I turn the side number over to Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Home Depot associated with the acquisition of right-of-way easements needed to construct the intersection improvements at K7 and Eisenhower. The City of Lansing and KDOT partnered in a cost share program for improvements to the intersection of K7 and Eisenhower. As those improvements benefit both the residents of Lansing and Leavenworth, the two cities signed an agreement 2020-35 that defined the responsibility and the cost to be funded by each community. The agreement states that each city is responsible for the acquisition of easements and rights-of-way for properties within their city limits. The plans for the intersection improvements identified the need for temporary construction easements, a permanent drainage easement, and additional right-of-way. Since last summer, the city has been working with SMH Consultants to help facilitate the easement acquisition with Home Depot. Despite answering questions and providing requested feedback to their corporate office, acquisition had not moved forward. On November 9th of last year, the City Commission approved Resolution B 2300 regarding the appropriation of private property for public purposes. This started the combination process required before KDOT would permit bidding to occur. On January 26th of this year, District Court did approve the petition for eminent domain and appointed appraisers to appraise the value of the land and determine damages resulting from those takings. Approval of the petition did allow the bidding process with KDOT to move forward. All through the process, the city, our consultants, and our attorney worked with the Home Depot attorney to arrive at an agreement prior to court proceedings. Now, this has been a long and somewhat challenging process. The city and Home Depot are very close to an agreement. If for some reason the agreement does fall through, the court date for eminent domain to move forward is scheduled for June 14th. We did receive an email from this attorney for Home Depot today that we should have the signed documents this Thursday, the day after tomorrow. The city is required to follow, is following the required steps to obtain the property. And the agreement between the city and Home Depot lays out the compensation and the work items associated with the acquisition. Once finalized, and the city manager approves of the form and content, the signature of the mayor will be required. A copy of that draft agreement is included in your packet. We don't, are unaware of any changes to that, so we feel this will be the final form. At this time, we do not have the final cost for the right-of-way easements associated with Home Depot. However, the cost for the appraisals was $1,300. And when you look at the agreement itself, the cost for Home Depot, we paid them $25,000. There will be additional attorney costs associated with that. Staff does recommend the City Commission authorize the mayor to sign the final agreement for the acquisition of right-of-way easements associated with Home Depot for the K7 and Eisenhower intersection improvement project. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Mayor, Commissioner, one of the reasons that we're, that we have to do this is we don't meet again until the middle of June, and we are very close. So if the substance of the contract changes, then this will be null and void, and we would have to bring a new contract to you. Sure. But with the project starting imminently and with the agreement supposedly coming on Thursday, this is sort of approving it based on the terms that you see here. And again, we will review, though, and make sure that the final draft reflects what we have here, and bring you back any changes if there are any.
Okay.
Mr. Faust, could you just kind of speak to collectively the benefit that this improvement's going to bring to the city?
Sure, actually, it's going to make a huge difference at the intersection of traffic flow. Right now, if you're coming up from Lansing and heading northbound, there's one left-hand turn lane. When the project is done, there'll actually be two dedicated left-hand turn lanes. And as you're driving south, there'll actually be a dedicated right turn lane in front of Quick Trip. So it's actually going to really improve the flow of the intersection.
I was going to say, more people are going to hit that intersection, be able to go through, then get stopped and wait for a while to, yep.
Fast upgrades to the appearance of the intersection, lighted poles, I believe.
Yeah, it would be lighted.
Right, so just an appearance for the entryway into the city of Leavenworth.
Yeah.
ADA accessibility, warning systems, and really just getting people through the city of Leavenworth.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Just need a motion.
I move that the City Commission authorized the mayor to sign the final agreement.
Second.
For the acquisition of right-of-way easements associated with the Home Depot for the K7, Fourth Street, Eisenhower intersection improvement project.
Second, yep.
Okay. Begin voting, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Mr. Faust. Next up is, consider award of bid for mowing services.
Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development, will talk about the challenges that we've faced recently.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, each year, the City of Leavenworth uses contract services to complete mowing. We have what we call our cluster mowing, which is city-owned properties that we do, drainage ditches, vacant lots that we've got at tax sale, some rights-of-way, things like those. We group those into five separate clusters, and each cluster is put out as a separate bid. We also do code enforcement mowing for property owners that fail to keep their lawns maintained to 12 inches or below. They receive a violation notice if they don't mow that on their own. We have a contractor go out and take care of that mowing, and then that property owner is assessed. In 2019, we put the, the mowing services out for bid, and a contract was awarded for a two-year term with the option to renew for another two years. That contract was renewed in 2021. And the 2022 mowing season was supposed to be the second year of that renewal, and we would have needed to bid it out again in 2023. On April 25th, our staff was notified by our mowing contractor, we just had one mowing contractor who had the award for clusters and code enforcement. We were notified that he'd be unable to fulfill his contract for the remainder of the season due to his company equipment being stolen and him needing to terminate all of his staff. So, after that occurred, we got an RFP put back together, put that out to known mowing contractors, and it was published in the Leavenworth Times per our regulations for bids. And we had bid proposals due on May 12th. We received one bid for the five clusters from Affordable Lawn and Cemetery Care. We received no bids for the code enforcement mowing. So tonight, we've got here for your approval and acceptance, the bids for mowing of the five clusters. Just to kind of run through the prices on those, Cluster one is $1,920 per mowing, not to exceed $21,120 for the season. We've got 11 mowings scheduled for the year. Cluster two is $1,595 per mowing, not to exceed $17,545. Cluster three is 410 per mowing, not to exceed $4,510. Cluster four is 460 per mowing, not to exceed $5,060. And Cluster five is 540 per mowing, not to exceed $5,940. This contract will expire at the end of this year, and we will rebid all of our mowing in 2023 as we had planned to do anyway. And just a little bit of a side note on why, why we mainly, maybe only got one bid. Typically, we would put out bids for mowing in January. To put it out at the end of April is really late in the season for any sort of landscape company. They've already got their workload pretty much set for the summer. So, we were actually fortunate to even get one bid. And then just to let you know what we are doing on the code enforcement, we have contacted individual contractors to see if they could handle maybe a portion of it each week. We've gotten a good handful that said they could help us out on a weekly basis, kind of as their schedule allows. So what we're going to be doing is just on a week-to-week basis, we'll put together our list of properties that need code enforcement mowing, and then just go down our list of contractors who's, who have given us a price that they'll mow for. And we'll just start at the top and just kind of get them parceled out to whoever can take those and get that taken care of as best as we can. So again, tonight, this is the bid for the cluster mowing, and staff would recommend acceptance of the proposal for mowing services from Affordable Lawn and Cemetery Care in an amount not to exceed $54,175.
So this is, this is one year?
Yes.
And then, in the winter, then we'll start looking at?
Yeah, next year.
In June, to get a two-year.
Correct.
And then prices will be $7 a gallon of gas.
This is significantly higher than what we were paying prior, and we knew that that was going to be the case, and that's just kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got to have hope.
Yeah.
This company is ready to go next Monday?
Yep, they're ready to go. We plan on starting the first, the clusters are mowed in two-week cycles, and we've got the first one set to start on the 30th. And then they'll have two weeks for that first cycle.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds great.
All right. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the proposal for mowing services from Affordable Lawn Care and Cemetery in an amount of not to exceed $54,175.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Hingel.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Okay, next up, first consideration ordinance, rezoning 1830 South Broadway from PUD to R-MX, and this is just a consensus.
Correct. So as you said, this is a request to rezone 1830 South Broadway from PUD, which is Planned Unit Development, to RMX, which is residential mixed-use. This property is the current Council on Aging building. And it's approximately 9.32 acres in size. Council on Aging, as you're aware, is moving into the old Cushing Memorial Hospital site completely by the end of this year. So a public hearing for this was first held by the Planning Commission to rezone the property on March 7th. At that time, the request was to rezone the property from R16, high-density, single-family residential to RMX, residential mixed-use. After that public hearing was held, it came to our attention that the property had actually been rezoned to PUD in 2009. And through some sort of error, filing error, I can't speak to what happened in 2009, that was just not recorded properly in city records. And so after speaking with the city attorney, we went back to kind of square one and re-advertised, sent out new legal notices indicating the correct zoning of PUD. Nothing about the proposal had changed, we just needed to start with the correct zoning for that request. So, when the property was rezoned in 2009 to PUD, it restricted the uses to government storage, temperature-controlled storage, governmental uses, and offices for private entities serving government needs. This particular rezoning is being requested to allow the property owner to renovate the building to allow for a mix of office and multifamily residential uses. And the owner, the new owner has indicated that he anticipates approximately 30 residential units to be put into this building. And then he'll just kind of work from there to see what, what kind of mix he could get with office uses. But the RMX zoning district would allow that mix of office and the multifamily in this building, which again is about to be vacated by the Council on Aging. During the first public hearing held by the Planning Commission on March 7th, the board voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning request. During that meeting, a total of six neighbors spoke in opposition to the proposal or voicing concerns regarding it. During the public hearing held by the Planning Commission on May 9th with the correct zoning, one neighbor spoke in opposition to the proposed rezoning. So whenever we are looking at a rezoning, we've got several conditions of determination that were required by state statute to go through, so I will just go through those for you right now. The first is the character of the neighborhood. Again, the subject property is the site of the Council on Aging. The surrounding and adjacent properties are all single-family homes with St. Cashmere Parish located to the northeast at the corner of Pennsylvania and Broadway. The property's access is located along Garland Street, and this also does about Pennsylvania, South Broadway, and Reese Street. The second is the zoning and use of properties nearby. All adjacent properties are zoned R16, which is high-density, single-family residential district, and uses are single-family residential with, again, St. Cashmere Parish to the northeast. The next is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it's been restricted. The property was built in 1960 and was previously used as the county infirmary. The nature of the building sort of limits its potential uses, and with it being soon to be vacated by the Council on Aging, that entire building would become vacant. And it does also have the large green space and pond associated with it. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning does have the potential to impact the surrounding properties by increasing the vehicular and foot-traffic flow in the area. The building has, again, been used for office space and community, community center-type uses for the Council on Aging. The next is the length of time that the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The property is currently not vacant right now, but will become vacant within the next couple of months with the Council on Aging relocating. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning could have a potential positive effect on the public health, safety, and welfare by allowing for the reuse of an existing building that is about to become vacant and by providing for a mix of residential office and commercial uses for the community. The next is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of the request. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. This parcel is identified as public or semi-public on the future land use map. And while the proposed rezoning to RMX is not specifically a public or semi-public use, the designation of public or semi-public does take into account the potential for a more intense use of the property than what currently exists. And so with, with that, staff would find that the proposed use is in conformance with the overall goals of the adopted comprehensive plan. And then the final is any other such factors that may be relevant, and there are no other factors acknowledged. So, again, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this. Your, your options are just to place the ordinance on first consideration, to approve the rezoning, to deny the rezoning request, or to return the rezoning request to the Planning Commission for further consideration.
Consensus, right? Yeah, it's just consensus.
Yes.
The one... The, the one, the one person that came out to talk, second round, her, her, uh, her concern was the condition of Garland Street, right?
I believe that's correct.
And Garland Street, if I'm not mistaken, is on the pavement management plan for this year?
Yes.
Yeah.
That one section, yes.
Yep.
I just remind the commission that whether it's at this park or on second consideration is good for at least to have some comments on the record as to the reasons for your, uh, decision that you do make, whether it is, whatever it might be. It's good to have some of those, even if it's reference to the factors that, that you just put forth.
Well, I would, I would say I would support, I would support the rezoning. It needs to be rezoned. And, uh, it's, um, I, I, I think it would be good to be able to use that building and, uh, to be able to improve on it, to make the neighborhood nicer.
Right. Yeah, it's a nice piece of land. Uh, I know, um, I do work part-time right now with the Lummer County Council on Aging and so, um, it's a large building and, uh, I could foresee, like he said, thirty residential units and, um, like I said, it's beautiful area and, um, and a nice pond, so, uh, I would love to go forward with this instead of just seeing, um, an empty building.
I second that.
Everything Julie said, I echo it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Bydwan.
For you.
Mr. Bydwan has, uh, he's been patient to go through all of this.
Yes, yes.
Go through the correction and all that.
Yeah.
You know, and he still wants to make improvements to that, uh,
Yeah.
to that area. And I think, you know, if he's able to turn that into, uh, something that promotes the use of the building and pays property taxes for it, you know, I'm, I'm well for that.
Okay, so do I have a consensus then?
You have to move forward?
Yes.
Okay, to move forward. Okay. Okay, uh, next up, uh, Commissioner Martin, if you just want to go ahead and do the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the claims for, uh, May seventh, twenty twenty-two through May twentieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of seven hundred thirty-six thousand forty-five dollars and ten cents. Net amount for payroll number ten effective May twentieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred seventeen dollars. Includes police and fire pension, the amount of nine thousand thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second. Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengel.
Aye.
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 Okay. And now, uh, uh, as a city commission action to go into executive session, um, I, Mayor Kamala Leonheard, uh, motion, move to recess into executive session to discuss legal options pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Exception per KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two. The open meeting to resume in the city commission chambers at?
Eight-twenty?
Eight-twenty. City Manager Paul Kramer and City Attorney David E. Waters are requested to be present during this executive session.
Second.
You get voting, Hengel?
Aye.
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 Okay. Back from executive session, so, uh, we are finished with our meeting. Um, I'll go around if anyone has any other comments. Mr. Kramer?
I don't have anything to say.
Commissioner Hengel?
Just a, a question probably to the Assistant City Manager. Do you know when we'll get a, a report or a status update on the, how the Bird scooters thing is going?
If I can answer that, so.
Recode the microphone, please.
That was information the city should have had, um, when the program started. We've had some technical difficulties with Bird. So I have yet to be able to access the website. Their IT team is troubleshooting that. Um, as soon as I have access to the website, it will show, um, the information that we are going to want to look at. So it'll be where have the scooters been used, how often, um, what's the fleet look like right now? Um, I will have access to all that on their website. We've just had some technical glitches. So when I get that information, I will share that with the commission.
Yeah, thank you.
We should have had that several weeks ago.
It, just, and thank you Penny for that. Um, I want to talk to my fellow commissioners. So we should expect to see a ramp up in use, probably I would imagine for the first two or three months. And then, you know, if it's going to be steady or show continual growth, that's going to probably give us good feedback on how people are liking the program. Right now, a feedback I'm getting on the street is still, man, those things look, they look trashy. It looks like it's cluttering the town. Um, again, just the feedback right now, so, but I'm sure, I know they're being used because they're moving around different locations in the city, so.
I got a call yesterday. Why, why is the scooter in my yard and what do I do about it? So I said, well, it can go all over the town and, but probably, and she said, well, it looks like they ran out of steam. I said, well, probably they're out of their boundary, because she was in the.
That, or yeah, or they didn't have any money left.
Yeah, they did have any money left.
So we want to look for that, that decline. There's going to be, starting to be a little bit of trend down, that's going to be indicative of.
Well, you gotta look at seasonal too. I mean, I'm sure with, you know, ice on the ground or snow, I mean, you can try to ride one of those, but yeah, I don't think it's going to work that well.
I think for the citizens, the newness of it is already wearing off.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see them flying around as much as I used to.
I saw one in the rain today. I was surprised.
Really?
Yeah, I'd be surprised too.
So we'll wait and see what, um, Assistant City Manager Haller gets that information. That'll be great. Okay, did you have anything else?
Have a good week, everybody. Enjoy the Memorial Day weekend. Please be safe.
Yep, uh, be safe, God bless, and I pray for the family members in Texas.
Oh, yes.
I don't have anything. Thank, thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, just one, one, uh, quick thing. So we just made a decision tonight that is impacting a potential new business coming to Leavenworth. Uh, I, I think I can speak for all of our commissioners here that we definitely are welcoming new businesses into town. Uh, there's a lot of things out there right now, a lot of good opportunities, uh, other companies that are looking to come to Leavenworth. So we do want to work with, uh, business owners, uh, and, and we want to help them to become creative in pursuing avenues to make things a reality. Uh, if not all avenues are pursued or we hit some roadblocks, we can't always control that. So, uh, would encourage people to continue to put on your creative thinking caps on ways to make your business a reality here, because we do want to work with you.
Absolutely.
Good, great, very good. Um, also have is, uh, Happy Memorial Day, yeah, stay safe. Need a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Third.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye?
Aye.